Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 2nd meeting of the Lexington City Board of Education. I'm David Anabnett, and Board Attorney, and so I'm sitting in just for the very limited time of calling the meeting to order and conducting the oath of office. We are fortunate to have four new, some new-new, some returning board members who will take their oath of office this evening, and so it's an honor to be asked to participate in that. So I have been told to come around front, and I'll call each one of you up, and if we are not in the proper place, then someone let us know. Ms. Levret-Lide, would you join me? We're going to bring your Bible. I will let you have this, so you can have a little guide to read along. So we'll begin, if you'll hold that.
Okay.
If you want to face that way. You tell us where you want her to be.
So they can see you on the camera.
There we go. So I state your name.
I, Cheryl Levret-Lide.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Lexington City Board of Education.
Of the Lexington City Board of Education.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So if you will sign that. And we'll have somebody to sign before you finish, too. I just want to get that done first. Thank you so much. You made it easy on me. Makes me nervous, too. And the next one, I had this picked up, if you'll join me. I'll let you hold that. That's a little guide, and hold the Bible in your left hand. You might. You hold that in the left hand as well, and raise your right. So maybe you can hold it together. Other way. There we go. Okay. Look that way.
Stand on the sticker.
That little black sticker.
Y'all know I'm nervous, right?
I state your name.
I, Angela McDuffie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will well and truly execute.
I will well and truly execute.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member of.
Of the Lexington City Board of Education.
Of the Lexington City Board of Education.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. McDuffie. I'd like to let you sign that. Ms. Miller, would you please go join us? Hold the Bible in your left hand, and this is just for a little guide, but you need to raise your right hand. And we'll start out. I state your name.
I, Patricia Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Lexington City Board of Education.
Of the Lexington City Board of Education.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You sign that. Ms. Riddell, would you join us? Ms. Riddell, if I'll give that to you in your left hand, you can have this as a little cheat sheet, and if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Deborah Riddell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will well and truly execute.
And that I will well and truly execute.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Lexington City Board of Education.
Of the Lexington City Board of Education.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ms. Riddell. So I just signed this. So it is also our duty and our job tonight for the board, the newly constituted board, to have an election of board officers. So according to policy, we'll begin with the election of a board chair to serve for this upcoming year, and historically, the board has used ballots, and so I did want to ask if there's a motion to approve the use of ballots in handling the officer elections. Is there a motion? Is there a motion from Ms. McDuffie? Is there a second from Mr. Wall? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? So I will pass out the ballots for chair, and then either myself or Melissa will come around and collect those. And people may need pens.
Should I have a pen? Can I just do this right here? I have a pencil and a marker. Okay, so we have three for Angie McDuffie for chair. We have two for Brett Wall and two for Derek Horton.
So we don't have a majority, so we'll have to do another round. We don't have a majority of the board voting for any one person. Majority of the whole board has to choose. So let me pass this round one more time.
So we have four for Ms. McDuffie, two for Mr. Wall, and one for Mr. Horton.
So majority has selected Ms. McDuffie. Congratulations. So if I can pass around the ballots for vice chair.
We have four for Derek Horton, one for Kathy Hinkle, and two for Brett Wall.
All right. Congratulations to both of you. And just so you don't get away from me, the four newly sworn-in board members, we do have a couple of other things for you to sign, maybe at a break sometime before the meeting's over. I'll invite Ms. McDuffie to come to the chairman's seat.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lexington City School Board, December the 2nd, 2025, school board meeting. At this time, we will enter into closed session according to, let me pull up the general statutes. Let's see here. Okay. According to general statutes, GS, general, 143-318.11A6, to discuss personnel matters, general statutes 143-318.11A3 for attorney-client privilege, and general statutes 143-318.11A1 to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to state or federal law, or not considered a public record within chapter 132 of the North Carolina general statutes. Is there a motion to go into closed session? I'll entertain the motion. Motion made by board member Wall. Second by board member Hinkle. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. We'll go into closed session. Thank you.[1181.12]
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lexington City School Board December the second, twenty twenty five school board meeting. At this time, we will enter into closed session according to, let me pull up the general statutes. According to general statutes, GS, uh, general, uh, one forty three dash three eighteen dot eleven A six, to discuss personnel matters, general statutes one forty three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three for attorney-client privilege and general statutes one forty three dash three one eight dot eleven A one to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to state or federal law or not considered a public record within chapter one thirty two of the North Carolina general statutes. Is there a motion, um, to go into closed session? I'll entertain the motion. Motion made by board member Wall. Second by board member, um, Hinkle. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, we're going to closed session. Thank you.
Welcome to the Lexington City School Board of Education, the December 2nd, 2025 Board Meeting. At this time, I would ask everyone to please stand and as we go into a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Hardy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Board Members, you have your agenda before you. Just wanted to ask, are there any corrections, any changes, any additions? Dr. Hardy, I did ask that the arise MOU be pulled from the consent for further explanation and discussion. And placed under the item number 10, Board of Elections, C. Okay, are there any other changes or corrections? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. Motion made by Board Member Cheryl, is there a second? Second made by Board Member Patty, all in favor?
Are you here? Vote by electronic?
Okay, so we'll vote by electronics? Okay. And she. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Alrighty, next. We'll have the approval of the minutes. Board members, are there any changes, any corrections, anything differently on the, as far as the minutes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
How many were approved minutes of November meeting?
Minutes approved by Board Member Kathy Hinkle, second.
Second.
Second by Board Member Patty, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, vote by electronic? Okay, and the motion to approve the minutes carries. Next agenda item is.
Superintendent's report.
Good evening. It is always a great day to be a Yellow Jacket, and I know we've lost some of our audience, but I know there are millions, millions of folks out there in our community watching, and we want to make sure that they still get all of the information about Lexington City Schools. Tonight truly was an important event. We had the great opportunity to have board members officially take the oath of office. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Cheryl Leverett-Lide and Ms. Patricia Miller, and also our two returning board members, Cheerperson Ms. McDovey and Board Member Ms. Verdel. We look forward to continuing to work with you so that we can ensure that everyone is always going to be somebody and we thrive in the hive. Truly, November and December have been months where our community has come together. We have been blessed with strong community support, and I know this list is long, but I want to make sure that every donor has the opportunity, their name is on the screen, but we have the opportunity to acknowledge them because their commitment truly helps Lexington City Schools and most importantly, all of our babies. Elevation Church provided a $2,500 donation supporting tutoring and expanded educational opportunities. Lauren's Ladder, a 20,000 contribution to communities and schools for Lexington and Davidson County, supporting students in every grade level. The Corey Holt Foundation provided Thanksgiving meals for our custodians, maintenance team, and school nutrition staff, truly a meaningful gesture recognizing the individuals who keep our schools up and running each day. Journey Church hosted a Thanksgiving community meal on November 27th for families across the community. Reverend Suber and congregation donated multiple boxes of food to support families at Southwest Elementary Global Academy ahead of the winter break, ensuring those essential resources are right there. ahead of the winter break, ensuring those essential resources are right there for the babies. Delta Kappa Gamma provided gift cards and handwritten notes of encouragement for all of our beginning teachers. The Bounce Family Foundation contributed 5,000 to support the Angel Tree and students in need throughout the remainder of the year. Lexington Church of Christ donated 15 complete Thanksgiving meal boxes, supporting families across all schools. First Baptist Church is planning to donate 20 complete meal boxes on December 10th to support students and families across our schools. From the bottom of our hearts, we want to thank our community. We know that a community that thrives together means that our babies are going to be successful. Thank you for all that you have done to support our schools and our community. This is a great opportunity to celebrate. We always want to celebrate when we are statewide winners. And tonight, we get the opportunity to honor our school nutrition department. We were the winner of the North Carolina Summer Nutrition Champions Award, Going the Distance in Innovation. We want to thank Ms. Kaitlin Brown, who represented the district at the Summer Palooza Awards in Hickory on November 18th. She presented the district's innovative work to ensure that our children have access to nutritious meals throughout the summer. DPI also presented Lexington City Schools with an official banner and a certificate to commemorate this recognition. We want to commend our school nutrition staff, the entire team, and the leadership for their year-round commitment to our students. I think many of our visitors are actually down the hall at our basketball game. So this is the perfect opportunity for us to share about our athletics update. The fall season has concluded and we want to extend our appreciation to all of our student athletes, our coaches, and their families. We are in the midst of our winter season. Wrestling opened the season on November 14th at Fort Bush. The swim team begins their regular season competition they began on November 21st. And basketball season has already began as well and we are actually hosting a home game this evening. Indoor track opens competition later this month. This winter, student athletes will also debut new uniforms in men's wrestling, women's wrestling, and women's basketball. Some of the upcoming events, we have on December 12th, Basketball versus Thomasville, and on December 20th, a wrestling match. We continue to make sure that our families are more informed and have communication systems that keep everyone on the same page. This includes our internal and external messaging, our safety alerts and notification protocols, as well as information through our website and our mobile app. And as we may enter the wintery season, it's so important for our families to make sure that you have that app. You will get those notifications much faster. You will not have to wait to see that on the TV or to hear my voice on a phone call. Another place to celebrate, the Lexington Senior High School Spark Lab. Our students are Apple App Showcase finalist. They continue to lead in creativity and innovation. This team of students were selected as state finalists in the Apple App Showcase. Their mental health support app helps young people navigate emotional challenges and access for wellbeing resources. The team will present their project this Friday. So we all need to be thinking good thoughts this Friday because we want to bring back the winner. We are extremely proud of our students as well as their advisor, Mr. Beamer, who is also our Lexington City Schools District Teacher of the Year. Another place we want to thank our community, we launched our Angel Tree on November 15th. And within the first days, 50 students were already sponsored by our community. As of today, we only have one student who still needs a sponsor. If you are interested, please reach out to Ms. Tracy Marsh so that we can get you connected. We are so grateful to our staff and our community who have sponsored our children to make sure that they have a wonderful holiday season. Gifts are due on December 15th with distribution that will be completed by December 19th. A few reminders, our last day before winter break is December 19th with winter break beginning on Monday, December 22nd. We want to make sure that our families know that we will not be having school over those holidays. We want to wish everyone in our community as well as our staff a restful and joyful winter season. We want to welcome our new principal at Charles England Elementary. Dr. Michael Courtwright was introduced to the community on November 24th and his first day at Charles England will be on Monday. We also want to update you on our Community Leader Series. We are going to reschedule our December 10th Lexington Middle School Community Leader Series. You will have an updated date before you go home for the winter break. And just another reminder, make sure you download the mobile app and also we have your QR code. We want to make sure that the millions of folks watching, just scan those QR codes. That will keep you connected. Facebook, X, Instagram, as well as the parent portal, very important, where's the bus? And then you have the Lexington City Schools website. Thank you so much and we want to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you, Dr. Hardy. Next, on the agenda, we have the consent. And to, we will have a motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent with the removal of the arise MOU. Well, the overnight. Is that under consent? Yes. And is pension spiking student placement? Yes. Okay, is that all the questions you have? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent. Motion made by Board Member Wall, second. Second by Board Member Cheryl, all in favor? We'll do it electronically and. Okay, motion carry. Next on the agenda, we don't have any appearances by any citizens, correct, Dr. Hardy? We'll next have the updates on the policy from one of our policy members, Ms. Hinkle.
Okay, this evening, we have one set of policies to come to you for approval and that is the 6,000 custom. Okay, thank you. This evening, we have one set of policies to come before you for approval and that is the set of the 6,000 custom policies. It includes policies on transportation, school nutrition, finance, and student services. Including in this policy is 6402, Participation by Historically Underutilized Businesses. Previously, the Board of Education set the goal of engaging with historically underrepresented business owners at 10%. Are there any questions regarding this policy update? Okay, this policy is before the Board for Approval this evening and Ms. Mrs. Chair, we need a motion for approval.
David, did you have anything further? Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the North Carolina School Board Association Policy Series 6,000. Motion made by Chairman Horton, Vice Chairman Horton, second. Second by Board Member Cheryl. Okay, alright, motion carries. Alright, next we have City Council, any reports from the City Council meeting? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Jones, Business and Finance.
Board Members, as Ms. Jones comes before you, this evening included in her financial report is also the budget for the current year. Just as a reminder, Board Members have requested that you have the opportunity to review those items that will be requiring a vote. So tonight, this information is before you for information only. It will come back before you for a vote. This gives you an opportunity to review the information and ask any questions that you may have. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Dr. Hardy. Does everyone have the proposed budget in your documents? If you do not, I have some, I've got some hard copies. I'm happy to. In addition to your budget packet, you also have two appendices of the program report and the purpose codes. You do not have those attached in your document. Ms. Hunt will make sure that you get an electronic copy of it, but just for reference, I made copies ready. So you should have two documents, the purpose codes and the program codes. Purpose codes, there you go. How many more you need?
Ms. Verdel and Mr. Wall.
There's going to be a quiz afterwards. You sure you don't want to eat a cookie? So you should have the proposed 25-26 budget packet in your docs for review. The information contains all new allotments received to date. Please remember that we still do not have an approved budget from the state. We will submit amendments based on the approved changes. Everyone is able to see a copy of the budget, is that correct? Okay. As Dr. Hardy stated, we wanted everyone to have an opportunity to review the material prior to approving the final document. Please note that this is a review of the proposed budget. I will request a formal approval at our next Board Meeting. The packet is very similar to what we have used historically. It includes the basic structure of our funding along with an explanation of each fund. So if you turn to page five or page four, we'll give you the basic fund structure. Page five will give you the budget specifics. On page seven is an overview of our fund balance. Please note, this is the fund balance from last year in 2024. Because we have not finalized the audit for 25, 24-25, I did provide the information from our prior year. So this is not the current fund balance information. Okay, once Mr. Quinn comes to do his final audit, we will be able to share our ending fund balance for 25 fiscal year. Does that make sense? The next section in our packet is the proposed budget that addresses each fund with details on how we recommend the funds be spent. A snapshot of the total funding is provided on page 11. I'll give you a chance to just peruse that. Your next page, page 12, starts the proposed budgets for all of our detailed funds. On page 12 is our local current fund. Remember, these are the funds that are funded by Davidson County according to our per pupil enrollment. Outside of our state fund and our federal fund, this is probably one of the larger funding sources that we have. Page 13 is our local supplement. This is funding from our tax revenues.
Do we, Ms. Jones, do we ask questions at the end?
You're welcome to stop me if you would like, whatever you're comfortable with, Ms. McDuffie.
Okay, I just wanted to ask as far as the per pupil enrollment. Is that like, what is, I know that the monies that you said from the commissioners is based off of that. What again is that?
What is that number? So last year, our per pupil enrollment was 2,848. This year, it is 2,835. And when you hear people reference our ADM, that's our ADM for 25-26, is 2,835. As I stated, page 13 is our local supplements. This is from our tax revenues. Page 14 is the state public fund. It says special revenue funds. These are our funds from the state. This is probably our largest source of funding. Page 15 is our federal funding. Doesn't look like a whole lot on that sheet because we just haven't gotten a whole lot from our federal funding right now. We are able to carry over funds from the prior year. This is probably the only fund that you'll see a lot of carryover from the prior year. But these are the funds that we have received to date. Page 16 is our capital projects fund. These are our major projects and some of our furniture and supplies for our schools. Page 17 is our other special revenue. This funding is specific to our restricted revenue expenditures. The major revenue here is our developmental center. As you can see, we have multiple sources of restricted revenue in this fund.
What is that indirect cost rate?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Ford.
The indirect cost rate?
I'm happy to get that for you and I'll let Dr. Hardy know and we can send it to you. I'm sorry. So our CTE team had purchased a door some time ago. We put it on. We put it on gov dot deals and sold it, and that was the revenue from that door. No, we, you probably would not have seen it because it's current year revenue. And it's not something that we would get every year, it's just from the proceeds from a sale. So we need to segregate that to make sure that it's used specifically for our CTE group.
Uh, and so, um, that's how much, uh, we?
Sold the door for?
Uh, on, uh, I'm sorry, I was looking at something in, uh, the rental of the school property.
So that is, that is an estimation based on prior year. Um, if you would like to know what we received last year, I'm, I'm happy to get that number for you.
Oh, okay.
And the last section of the packet is our budget resolution that summarizes the expenses by fund and purpose code. It basically, literally summarizes all of the expenses segregated by the purpose code. So as a reminder, we manage our budget, budget resolutions and amendments to the one-digit purpose code. Um, we will make sure that you get a really good detailed description of those purpose codes, um, as a reference point. And I'm talking to our new members because our, our, our other members, they already know, they already know this. But, um, we'll make sure that you get that information so that you can refer back to those purpose codes to know, um, exactly what they pertain to. Are there any additional questions regarding the budget? If you have any additional questions, please channel those questions through Dr. Hardy, and she will make sure that, that I receive them and will make sure that we respond back appropriately.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for keeping us abreast and staying on top and, and make, keeping our monies looking good. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, next, um, uh, under Board of Education, Board of Education, nine hundred and ten, uh, Buildings and Grounds Committee, you guys met, uh, could we have that report?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, the Building and Grounds Committee, Committee met on November the eighteenth. Uh, myself, Board Member, um, Committee Member, Ms. Verdell and Committee Member, Dr. Phillips were in attendance. We talked about the renovation update that is ongoing at Lexington Middle School. Some things, I think there was a checklist that needed to be corrected, um, and, excuse me, a checklist that needed to be updated and worked upon. And I do believe that that, that is still ongoing, Dr. Hardy and Mr. Curry.
Yes, sir, we, um, Mr. Curry, um, Mr. Norman, and I don't know the foreman's last name, Jeremy, um, and Ms. Jones did do a walkthrough today. Um, and we are, we are closer than you think in getting, um, that punch list completed. However, there are some additional items and it's the combination of those additional items as well as the punch list that, um, and that's the reason staff is recommending that we delay our event. But please know, board members will have the first access, and of course, you always have access to our buildings, but you'll have the first access before any other elected official or community member to tour the renovated building.
So like Dr. Hardy expressed, we, we did choose to hold off on viewing, um, for public viewing of the facility and the board will view it first. Um, there was also discussion regarding renovation of the concession stand area. It was, it was the advisement of the staff to hold off on that until twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, is that correct, Ms. Verdell? Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-seven budget year. And that is my report, Madam Chair.
Um, I did want, so will the renovations, um, be completed before going into the following year? Will it be completed by this month in December? Is that a target?
That is a target.
Uh, a, uh, how do I want to say, a, uh, determined target?
It's a reasonable, it's a reasonable target that I think we will be able to make.
Okay. Alright, any other?
No, ma'am, that is all.
Okay, um, so, um, the, uh, holiday, holiday, um, holiday staff gift.
So, board members, this is your opportunity to discuss the, um, gift that our board provides to all of our employees and discuss when you plan to do that and distribute that. And so we are just here if you have questions, um, but we're, we're here to, to listen and then, once you all have made that determination and it aligns with what Ms. Jones, um, allows us to spend, we will purchase that and make sure that it is ready for distribution, um, prior to staff going to their winter break.
Okay, board members?
So let's, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, for, for a little backdrop, for the new board members, traditionally, the board has went to every, went to the schools to provide a gift to each teacher, well, each staff person at the school. And I think this isn't, um, what, what they're, what they ask is, is that we get a consensus on a date and what we want to distribute, so.
And I, I would like to ask, uh, uh, Ms. Jones, uh, is there a, um, uh, allotted amount? Um, are we privy to know what that allotted amount is?
So what I, what I pull was historically, what we have provided to staff for the last fifteen years. Um, three years ago, we provided five dollar Chick-fil-A that cost us twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, the year after that, we provided ten dollar Chick-fil-A gift cards that cost us five thousand dollars. And last year, we did fifteen dollars and that cost us seventy-five hundred dollars. My recommendation is that we align with five thousand.
Okay. We have to stay within your recommendation because my mind was going somewhere, so. Uh, okay, board members, you have a question?
Is it always a gift card? I guess, at Chick-fil-A?
It's whatever the pleasure of the board.
We have, we have historically, I mean, the board has done, I think one year you all did mugs with coffee, I mean, with candy and hot chocolate. Um, so it's really at the pleasure of the board as long as you spend the time.
We did candy canes one year, the boxes, whole boxes of candy canes. I think the staff really, really liked the Chick-fil-A gift card, so. The Chick-fil-A's, have they been the last three years, four years? So maybe it's time to change to a new one, or? I don't know, I'm just questioning that. I, I, maybe surprising. Do you have a suggestion? Not really. Think about it, but, you know, if you got a Chick-fil-A card for the last three years, that was another Chick-fil-A card. So Ms. Jones, the Chick-fil-A card that fit with the five thousand, that is the ten dollar card, right? You can actually get a meal if you're careful for ten dollars of Chick-fil-A, can you?
Other board members, your input?
Well, I like to support local. But I think everybody likes Chick-fil-A. You know, we've, we've talked about some of the coffee shops who would give, give cards at those, but, um, everybody doesn't drink coffee, right?
So, uh, so, did you say would the Chick-fil-A's be fifteen dollars, ten? I was trying to pull.
I like to support local if possible, but we have so many staff members who live out of town, and if we did something local, it's not as convenient for them to purchase if they just hurry in and out of town right after they visit a school. So, um, you know, all you, millions of local businesses out there, we love you. But, you know, Chick-fil-A is something that you can find everywhere. And that's probably pretty much what we, why we've done.
So is everybody okay with Chick-fil-A? Okay, Ms. Jones, you win. Okay, so it'll be done.
Uh, I'm going to, to decide.
So, uh, look at some dates, uh, uh, Ho, uh, Ms., uh, Chairperson, uh, Horton, when, uh, is it normally during the week, because I know sometimes, uh, I attended.
The holiday luncheon has been scheduled for the sixteenth. I know one year you all did it that day and you did the gifts in the morning and then came to the luncheon at lunch.
Okay. Okay. So, is it the sixteenth?
We can't walk.
Okay, sixteenth, okay, so, uh, so it'll be the sixteenth, um.
Kathy and Dan?
Yeah, I asked, I asked. Okay, so then, the, uh, holiday gifts will be distributed on, uh, during the holiday luncheon on December the sixteenth. Okay, and so what time, uh, does the board, uh, you guys normally meet?
Seven, eight, seven, about seven?
Seven o'clock in the morning?
Well, we, we, we're about eight at least, about eight.
It was about eight thirty.
Well, yeah, Mr. Wall said seven.
Mr. Wall never gets there at seven.
We usually start at eight thirty.
Okay.
And we split the schools up.
And we've always gone to old schools, everybody's always piled in the car and gone together all the way.
We split last year.
Well, I think it'll be good if, if you guys agree, what, uh, I think it'll be good if all schools see, uh, board members, so.
No.
Oh, you won?
No.
Okay, okay. So do you split up, um, one or two to so many schools?
Usually two, I think, two, two or three people a school.
Okay, okay, so, uh, and do we decide that tonight or do y'all want to just?
We can decide that the day of.
The day of, okay, alrighty, so we're good with the holiday gifts being on the sixteen? Um, any more discussions?
What time we meet up here?
Uh, eight o'clock, uh, I think, um, eight thirty. Ms. Verdell said eight thirty. Not seven o'clock, Mr. Wall, you'll be here waiting for everybody else. Oh, okay. Alrighty, okay, um, so next, uh, we will, um, have the, uh, B, uh, C, which was, uh, the MOU. Arise MOU, okay.
Board members, a document is coming around and I will ask Ms. April Thompson to come forward, Senior Director for CTE Student Services and Special Programs. This evening, um, staff brought a recommendation to provide services to our students. These funds have been allotted to the organization due to a grant that will serve students in Davidson County. That includes students, um, that are in Davidson County schools, Lexington City schools and Thomasville City schools. This program, um, upon some request from board members, does provide the opportunity for our students to have experiences in multimedia education, cinematography, filmmaking and audio production. The program has the opportunity to provide mentors as well as this opportunity for support. It's a twenty-two week program. Upon approval, if the board does see fit for our students to have this opportunity, we would take recommendations from our school staff, host a family night so that we could talk to the families about the program, and then they would have the opportunity to participate. Due to the grant, it is at no cost to Lexington City Schools and transportation would be provided. Um, I know that, I did send this to you electronically, there are, are also a couple of links that you might want to look at to see the program. Um, Mr. and Abbotit has provided a couple of edits, um, that we have noted that would need to be made to the MOU. If it is the board's pleasure, then we would want to ask that in the motion that it would include upon legal review and those edits. Ms. Thompson has worked very closely, um, with the person who is facilitating this program, and either she or I are more than happy to answer any questions. Board members, this, this is before you, however, this is a choice. If you would like to approve this, that is okay. If you see fit for our students to have opportunities in other areas, that is also okay. It's your pleasure.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so, uh, thank you for providing that information, um, Dr. Hardy. Um, I wanted it, uh, pooled, uh, because the, I wanted more information as far as, um, how she, um, described it, but anything else further that you can provide us with, uh, in addition?
Um, I think it would be a great opportunity for our students, um, the vocational component along with the mentoring and then the real world experience working with cinematographers and musicians currently. Um, they have all the equipment to see this program through and it's, you know, it's a great opportunity for our kids to start learning, um, some resili- resiliency skills along with some professional skills that they could possibly use as they move forward, so.
Okay, and I know it says that, um, it'll be, um, uh, one day a week.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, s- uh, four to seven, right?
That's the proposed time, yes.
And I know, um, Dr. Hardy said that all three school, uh, systems, so how, would it be that they all come?
No, ma'am. They would only serve our students and they would serve twelve students at a time.
Oh, okay.
So it's a really intimate setting where students really learn either music production, cinematography, Foley Sound, things like that, and they have the three staff members working with them. So there'll be a lot of attention for those, uh, twelve kids working.
And where would that take place in our building?
Quite possibly at our middle school. It really depends on the students that we get. If it's more high school related, we would talk to Dr. Porter or talk to Dr., um, Mr. Stone about spacing at their school. There's no cost, there was an in-cost, um, uh, what was, it was a word for in-kind support, um, that it's, that the organization is requesting, but that is just a use of space.
Oh, okay. And I know you said there would be some staff members, uh, who would also be working past this time. Is these staff members volunteer to, um, to do this or is it, I mean, because it's from four to seven, which is, would that be, that's after?
The staff, they're not Lexington City school staff.
Okay.
They, they would be provided from the organization because they are the cinematographer and the musician, so it's not our teachers.
Okay, I was just thinking that I, I misunderstood, I thought, I knew that, that they would have their, uh, the ones that would be teaching, but I didn't know if you meant, uh, three, uh, three staff members from Lexington that would all be, all also be, uh, involved.
Just the creative youth staff.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So you said twelve students at, um, is it limited to twelve or will there be more than one rotation?
It'll be another rotation as students finish up their twenty-two week cycle, new students would come on.
Is there an application process?
Yes, ma'am, it is a referral process as well for at-risk students. So that would be an opportunity for, for our team to refer students to this program and then get the support they need and then learn, for them to learn new skills.
So when you say referral for at-risk and they select them, how would they go about selecting them?
They will have a, a sheet or a process for, you know, meeting the parents, talking to the parents, talking to the students about being a part of the program, and then move forward from there.
Okay, um, one last question. So, um, would there be enough time around? So, um, would there be enough time around to say, like, if this set of at-risk students didn't get it the first time around? And then the next time around, you get a group that didn't get it. Do you think that'll be enough time for everybody to eventually, uh, be a part of that, that would want to?
Um, that we would have to see, and I could definitely talk to Mr., um, Mr. Green, Mr. Douglas Green, who is the Executive Director, to see how that could really work out. And we can get that information back to you, if that's what you prefer. Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how long the gra- the grant is for?
It's for, uh, for, for run-up, what I understand from JCPC is for one year.
For one year, okay.
So they report on it annually, so they were just funded this year, I want to say in September. They, they're trying to get their program off the ground and to support the students.
And I am, yeah, I am in, in huge favor of this. She, I think, Dr. Hardy was, uh, blushing to me a second ago when she was talking about Board Members and multimedia and things of that nature. Um, but I, I do have one question in regards to, like, um, since there will be no Lexington City School staff available. And you are dealing with, and I hate to say this, but at-risk kids, what happens if an emergency breaks out? What are the protocols then?
Let us work on it.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, not a problem, yeah.
And we, we have often had, um, programs at our schools. Sometimes those programs do employ, um, Lexington City School staff. But before, that's part of that in-kind process, so anytime we have, like, I kind of call it the facility rental process. They go through that process, they know the emergency protocols. We also have Ms. Foster that works with them to make sure that they're aware. So if there are things that happen, there's a notification process to keep our children safe.
So is, to, uh, to me, it, uh, sort of reminds me of that, um, that several years, we, uh, had like a camp that would, uh, rent, uh, the space, the middle school space in, uh, summer camp, but it was something totally different. Okay, well, thank you, Ms. April.
Yes, um, according to Creative U, they would transport the students if needed for, uh, transportation home. Since it's an after-school program, the students would stay there. Um, optimally, you would like your parents a pickup, but they do have an SUV to transport students. It would not be a school bus or a school, um, car.
The parents have to provide permission for that.
That's exactly right.
So it wouldn't be a liability, they, the, what, does the parent sign off on a waiver or something?
Yes, ma'am, according to the MOU too.
Okay, okay.
Board Members, it's, it's your pleasure if you would like to take action or, or if you would like, not like to take action, please direct us in, in any way you would like.
All right, okay.
Okay, motion made by Board, uh, Member Wall, um, for the approval of the memorandum of agreement. Uh, or understanding for the Multimedia Academy, that K R. Multimedia Academy, um, upon legal review. And it was second by, um, Vice Chair, Chairman, uh, Horton. Uh, all in favor signify?
Oh, you hear?
Electronic. Electronic, out loud, um, all in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Alrighty, so moving along, um. I move my place. Okay, uh, we'll have the personnel. Uh, is that where we will, uh, vote on an open session for personnel? Okay, okay, um, so I just, uh, uh, entertain the motion to approve the personnel.
Ma'am, I, I will, I will, um, make a motion to accept the personnel report as presented. So these are two separate items, right? Yes.
Motion made by, um, Vice Chair Horton, second by Board Member Wall. Are we? Alright, motion carried. Next, we'll have the second item, uh, personnel item. Entertaining motion?
So I, I will, I will make the motion, Madam Chair, to accept the recommendation of the staff to uphold the suspension of, I have to call the name out, David, oh, Shannon Goss? Is that who it is? Okay, yeah.
Okay, motion made, made by Vice Chairman Horton. Second by Board, um, Member Wall. Out loud, all in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Okay, so the motion, uh, carries. Alrighty, uh, do we have any other discussions, any questions? I know you guys are ready to go to the basketball game, right? Alright, so if, uh, our hearts and minds are cleared, I will entertainment, en- entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn. Board Members. Horton, all in favor signify? Any opposed?